And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oops, this cord is...
I know.
Okay. Sorry, we're having cord issues with this telephone cord. All right, first up is the chairman's report, and I actually have a report this evening that I wanted to read. I wanted to take this opportunity to discuss emails Joe and I have received since last week concerning the events that took place on Facebook. A number of individuals shared with us Facebook screenshots of nasty and derogatory comments, accusations of paid agitators, and anger against current and prospective education members engaging in derogatory comments and jokes at the expense of parents and citizens of Monroe. They have called on us to take action against these individuals. I feel it necessary to address some of these items because in one email I was accused in advance of not taking action to address these situations. The Board of Education has no control over what board members post on their social media accounts and/or comments they make on social media. They have the same freedom of speech rights as ordinary citizens. Neither I, as Chair of the Board of Education, nor any other board member, nor the Board as a whole has the authority or power to remove an elected official from this Board. Do not take our silence as complicitness. I personally choose not to engage or go on social media, and all Board of Education matters should be discussed during our twice-monthly meetings. All right. That being said, we will move on to the consent agenda. So I have a motion to approve. Thank you, Nick. Do I have a second? Jerry. Joe, do you want to go over all the notices of retirements this evening, please?
I do. We have the who's who of certified staff that are going to be retiring with us at the end of the school year, starting with the Chekalinis. You know, Jack has been with us. Started teaching band at both Chalk Hill and Masseyk before he briefly left the district to pursue an administrative position in Region 15. Returned a few years later to become the principal at Fawn Hollow and then Jockey Hollow. And two years ago approached me about being able to help out and was actually doing double duty as the principal of Jockey Hollow and assistant superintendent. Suzie has spent her entire career teaching special education. She started at Monroe Elementary, went to Fawn Hollow, then Chalk Hill, and will be finishing up her career at Fawn Hollow this year. Darlene Fensor is another one who's held many different positions in the district. Darlene has been a parent educator, a regular education teacher, a special education teacher, the instructional leader of the Special Education Department at Masseyk, Assistant Director of Student Support Services, and she will leave us as the Director of Student Support Services at the end of this year. Vicki Flamm is a teacher at... was a social studies teacher at Jockey Hollow before moving to the History Social Studies Department at Masseyk. Patricia Flynn, Pat Flynn, is a longtime teacher at Monroe Elementary School, where she's currently teaching 4th grade, will finish her career there this year. Jeff Seymour is a man who's inspired several people to get their law degrees. He was a Masseyk English and History teacher and head of the M E A until two years ago, when he became the instructional leader for English at Masseyk and Jockey Hollow. And kind of like mentioning the Chekalinis together, we almost have to mention Bonnie Waring and Nancy Zukowski together because both have been the Masseyk N I S committee co-chairs for the last 20 years. At least 20 years. I know they did it in 2000, 2010, and 2020. I'm not sure about 1990. They may have done it then, too. Bonnie is a longtime business teacher at Masseyk, and with over 40 years of teaching experience, Nancy is our most tenured teacher in the district, beginning her career at Chalk Hill before moving over to Masseyk in the 1980s to teach math. I know that the decision to retire is often a difficult and personal one. We just wish the best for all of our retirees for their over 200 years of combined service to the district. That was a mouthful.
Yes. And every one of these staff members is going to be missed tremendously because of their contributions to Monroe Public Schools with their tenure here. And many of them will be very difficult to replace, so... Sorry, Joe.
There's some work to do.
Yeah, there's some work to do. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. First up, we have our lone Masseyk representative because today was Senior Skip Day, so there's no seniors here.
To start off, as most of you know, Friday night there is a Monroe miracle. Masseyk's football team beat New Fairfield 29 to 28 in a game that quite literally left you on the edge of your seat. This was the second time in Connecticut history that a team has made a 28-point comeback. The most special feature is that 39 years ago, Masseyk beat New Fairfield with the same score in the W C C championship. Homecoming week was filled with lots of other events besides the spotlighted game. Between anything but a backpack day where students brought kayaks, strollers, and shopping carts, the bonfire where the junior class held their first annual golf ball drop, and a school-wide pep rally, there was an endless amount of fun. Another exciting event coming up is the field hockey's team semifinal game at Newtown tomorrow, where they'll hopefully bring home the title they've been working so hard for all season. To top it off, the cast of this year's drama, Legends of Sleepy Hollow, will be showcasing their talent this Friday and Saturday at the Beardsley House. All in all, Masseyk has had a great first quarter of the school year.
Thank you. Other committee reports.
We're pointing to each other. Go ahead, Nick. So David and I both attended the Pension Committee and the Board of Finance meeting, and I was going to do the Board of Finance update. So, first of all, Joe and Darlene and Sheila gave a fantastic, I think it had to be 30 slides, 45-minute presentation at the Board of Finance meeting on Thursday. It was very well done. It was full of data, full of numbers, and I say that as a numbers person. And I think that Joe made the case very clearly about the discussion we had at the last board meeting around the ESAR funding and the funding of salaries and whatnot. The Board of Finance didn't take any action, and so I just continue to be concerned about what we discussed at our last meeting, that the superintendent can't begin to initiate some of the programs that he had listed in his presentation in mitigating learning loss due to COVID. There were also P D things in that spreadsheet as well, not just for students but for teachers and staff. He can't start doing those things or putting them in the ESAR grant if we don't get a commitment in funding the salaries in the current fiscal year. And the last comment that was made at the Board of Finance was see you in January, when we know more from the budget. But that's two months away, and that's two months that we can't start doing some of the programs that we want to start doing with the ESAR funding. So I don't know where we go from here. I know that every month that goes by, we're not able to do these things, but we can't do it unless we have the funding. So November 18th is their next meeting, and I'm hoping that there's some... there's a better update from that meeting.
Thank you. Dave?
Donna, the Pension Committee met on October 28th. Happy to continue to report that our pension is just over 90% funded. The state average is 76% funded with approximately $15.4 million in our BOE funds. The next meeting is in January, and the rest was pretty much routine.
Thank you. Anybody else have committee reports this evening? All right, hearing none. We will move on. Next up is public participation. And I have three people signed up to speak. The first person is Jessica Ward. And just as a reminder, since we have a couple of new people on here, state your name and address for the record, and it's three minutes of comment, please.
Hi, my name is Jessica Ward. I am a resident at 288 Garter Road. My husband and I have been Monroe residents for six years, and we really love living here. I'm an editor and writer for Disney Book Group, as well as a certified health coach, and my husband is an engineer at Sikorsky. We have a four-year-old daughter who is due to start kindergarten at Fawn Hollow next fall, and she's why I'm here. We've just recently learned of the plan to install a 5G cellphone tower on the land behind Chalk Hill, and this is very concerning to us. Studies on the effects of close proximity 5G radiation on humans are deeply troubling. Behavioral issues, memory loss, dizziness, headaches, insomnia, reproductive issues, and cancer have all been linked to increased R F R, which is radio frequency radiation exposure. Other countries and several communities within the U.S., including Eastern Connecticut, have recently banned or limited installation of such towers because these are health risks with which they aren't willing to gamble. It is my understanding from calling around to a few other Monroe parents and staff members that most of the community is unaware of this impending installation. And my husband and I firmly believe that staff and parents of both Fawn Hollow and Jockey Hollow should be directly informed before any further steps are taken.
Thank you. All right. Janos? There he is. Before you start, Bob, just make sure, I was hard to hear the first speaker, that the microphone was turned up. Thank you.
Janos Padge, 17, Meterview Terrace. I wanted to thank you all for having me again to speak about the transgender policy. I think that I provide a really unique angle to this point of view that I'm about to give. The last time I came here, I talked about my gender dysphoria, how I wanted to be a girl when I was eight years old, and how it grew into my puberty. I spoke about Lupron and the medication, how dangerous it is to be prescribed to children before they even start puberty. Detransitioners are a real thing. They come out by the thousands. They are transitioning before their puberty has even met halfway. They lose their ability to reproduce. They lose their ability to have sexual function. We know this is true. The World Professional Association of Transgender Healthcare even admits that 80% of kids with gender dysphoria will outgrow it. Today, I wanted to speak about sport. The sport thing is much bigger than this policy because it's already a policy that is in Connecticut. So I coached for two different school districts. I've been employed by seven in the last 13 years. I'm very good at what I do. The two teams that I coach are the best in the state. We go to national regionals. We go to world championships. In 2008, I was on a team that won the world championship in this sport. It's a co-ed sport. It's dominated by males. The second-place team that year that was second to us was also mostly male. We know that this athleticism advantage in males exists. As I mentioned the first time I was here, the fastest female runner, her record was set in 1988. Still hasn't been beat by a single female since then. But high school boys are beating this record every year. High school boys, not just adults. So we know that this advantage exists. Literally, no one is confused about this. Even trans activists that push policies like this agree because on the elite level, trans women must suppress their testosterone in order to compete fairly. But trans men don't have to do anything because they're female, so they have a disadvantage in sport. Yet we're pushing a policy that teaches kids and staff to ignore this measurable reality in lieu of gender identity. Gender identity is not sex. It is a deep sense or knowledge. That's how it's defined in the policy. It's not measured by a blood test. It can't be seen by others. It exists in the mind, and that's not to be offensive. It's literally defined that way. There is no physical defining factor in gender identity. In our country, we have freedom of thought, religion, and belief. The idea that males and females have separate bodies and work differently is not an uncommon belief. And yet pushing a policy like this is expecting staff and students to adhere to a new belief, that you can simply just change your sex. Teachers and parents are afraid of speaking up. I, as I said, I'm employed by a few different school districts. I've been employed by seven in 13 years. I'm friends with several teachers who are so afraid to say something because they're afraid they're going to get in trouble. They're afraid they're going to get fired or be called transphobic. I don't think transphobia is a thing. A phobia is an irrational fear of something. I'm not afraid of trans people. I just have a disagreement with a few of the ideas that are pushed out by trans activists. And trans activists are different than trans people. The trans people that I know don't agree with this. They actually are offended that they're being lumped into it. Is that my timer?
Yes.
Oh, my God. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. If I can just have 20 seconds. So for hundreds of years, males have been telling women what to do with their bodies, telling them when they can vote, telling them when they can drive. In other countries, this is a reality in our planet. Males in Texas are pushing policies on abortion laws, forcing women to do certain things with their bodies. And we have males that are writing policies, telling females that they must compete against males and deal with it to ignore the reality that we all know. And to me, that's just the greatest misogyny. And that's all I have to say today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Marie Blake.
Good evening. Marie Blake, 359 Wheeler Road. As we are all aware, town elections are tomorrow. We also know that school boards across the nation are making the news. Some prominent topics include mask mandates, policy development, and curriculum content. Parents and the community are becoming more involved, which is a good thing. I believe involvement of the community diminishes complacency and conflict and at the same time enhances collaboration, cooperation, conflict resolution, and a greater sense of community. I'd like to focus on three items: communication, involvement, and the idea that we're in this together. I'll start with the easiest with regard to communication. I have been on your Board of Education website more than I'd like to admit, but it's my first access point when I have a concern. Under the tab that's entitled Board of Ed Subcommittee, today I only saw the committee about reopening with COVID and the TERF committee. I believe in the past I have seen the Policy Committee. I think it would help if we had the members of each committee listed, the committee and members of that committee, so that we can have a more pinpointed way of communicating with those members, the community and the Board. With regard to public involvement, I have two suggestions. The first is to increase the membership of the Policy Committee, which I thought is a Subcommittee, but it's not listed under that tab. And under the bylaws of the Board, formulation, adoption, amendment of policies, which was last reviewed in 2013, it states, "A Policy Committee of the Monroe Board of Education, composed of at least three Board members, will be established at each organization meeting of the Board following the biennial town election," which I assume is tomorrow. We currently have only three Board of Ed members on that committee. I would like to encourage discussion that might consider a more diverse membership. Trumbull, for example, has three Board of Ed members and an administrative designee, which we do as well. I believe Jack is on that committee. But in addition, it has advisory members, which include an administrator, a parent or a guardian, a student, a representative from the Trumbull Education Association, and two representatives from the community. A lot... That's according to their website. I went on that today. Is that you, Joe? Is that me?
Nope, that's you.
That's me?
That means yes.
A lot has changed in the last few years, never mind the last eight years. I feel it is time to broaden the scope of this committee, especially after hearing comments from the public during the last few meetings regarding the transgender policy that is being looked at. My second suggestion for public involvement is about where on the agenda public participation is located. As it stands now, it is very early in the agenda, so many comments reflect back on items from the previous agenda which could have been two weeks prior. Maybe as a Board, you can explore the idea of having public participation after the old and new business agenda items, allowing comments to be more relevant to the night's discussion. Last, but definitely not least, is the notion that we're all in this together. I'd like to believe that is true, but sometimes actions speak louder than words. I just have a little bit more. Hypothetically, my question is, what would you say to me if I wore my mask hanging from one ear? Or if I wore it below my nose? Or if I wore it above my mouth? I would guess you would tell me to wear it properly, or you would ask me for a letter of exemption, or you would ask me to leave. We all know the mask is to cover both my mouth and my nose. On each agenda, you have it stated about Governor Lamont's mandate. Earlier in the school year, policemen were stationed at the entrance of Board of Ed meetings and checked to make sure all who entered were masked. If a person wasn't masked, that person was asked to produce a letter of exemption right then and there on the spot. The person was being held accountable for not wearing a mask. The Governor's mandate applies to all individuals in school buildings, including all of you who sit at this table. If you choose not to wear a mask or to wear it the wrong way, then I would expect at this point in time that the Chair of this Board would know in advance of the meeting that there is an exemption letter. As a mom and an educator, I'll end with a few of my favorite sayings.
All right, Marie, we are way over time. You need to finish.
Fine, I'm done.
Thank you. All right, that's all who I have listed, unless anybody has anything else. All right, I have... And I just wanted to remind, it's three minutes. When that timer goes off, that's wrap-up. It's three minutes is over. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Torres. I live at 94 Riding Ridge Road. In Agenda Item 3, the Chairwoman's report, you stated that the Board of Education has no control over the actions of its members and that the members have the same freedom of speech as the general public. However, your own Code of Ethics, final item, states that individual Board of Education members who make public statements not expressed by the Board of Education as a body must clearly indicate that they are making these statements as individuals and that these statements do not represent any official policy or position of the Board. It also states that Board members and superintendents must practice and promote ethical behavior. So in relation to the recent issues in the media that we're all aware of, I'm wondering, why do we have a Code of Ethics for our Board of Education members? Is that Code of Ethics unenforceable? And if we can ignore that portion of our bylaws as a body, what other portions of our bylaws can we also ignore? That's a question to the Board.
Thank you.
Hello. Lisa Marie Pinto, 4 Cherry Hill Circle. Pretty sure this is going to be the last time I'm going to come up here. I'm not against an LGBT policy. Though I think it's redundant, we do have policies in place. We have gender-neutral bathrooms. But I'm not against a new policy. I'm not in agreement with this policy being presented. It is extreme, and it isn't beneficial to the children, parents, or the school. It's already causing more divide than unity, which is disappointing since I believe a lot of us are all on the same page. Even though it may not seem that way, I think we are. The policy's biggest bullet points for me are the possible withholding of information from parents. I mean, if a student discloses anything to the school, they either call the parents or the authorities. There's no other option. These are their children. You can't keep information from them. They're kids. The other is the introduction of the LGBT materials and conversations at an elementary school level. Children are... Sorry, my glasses are flying out. Children are not old enough to process this. It will cause confusion and anxiety. Bullying, what defines it? The punishments, they're extreme in this policy. And I would hate for a kid to be falsely accused because they misuse their words. Bullying works both ways. Continuing to reprimand a fellow student over pronouns or to lash out because they made mistakes, that isn't fair either. We have to be 100% positive. There's bullying, and who's actually participating in the behavior? It's a pretty deep conversation when you talk about bullying, as of all of these objections, along with the benefits. There's benefits to the policy, I agree, but there's a lot. There's no way we can come to an agreement within these meetings. Three minutes to speak, no feedback. I think we need to take a different path. I propose meetings or sessions that the community and the Board can discuss the issue, come up with a solution that is fair to all. Objection of the policy is not phobic or racist or whatever else you want to label people. Most of us want the same thing, for children to be accepted and comfortable in school. Parents have to be comfortable as well, and there are too many red flags in this proposed policy for me to feel secure. Parents have a ton of positive ideas that could benefit and satisfy everyone. I think it is time we give that a shot because we are getting nowhere here, and it is getting ugly. This isn't good for the children, and at the end of the day, it's about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello. Jamie Krensky, 7 Cotton Town Lane. I am speaking today to express my disappointment with the social media activity I have witnessed these past few weeks. Comments on social media mocking parents who speak at Board of Education meetings is not only completely inappropriate, but downright disrespectful. Public participation exists for a reason. Parents should be able to express their concerns without being bullied, threatened, or shamed. How can children be held accountable when adults are engaging in the same cyberbullying and fear-mongering behaviors we are trying to teach are unacceptable to our kids? Board of Education members must be held to a higher standard. Maybe that means you need a social media policy. But having free rein to say whatever you want about parents and being on the Board is just unacceptable to me and a lot of other parents as well. When you have children and you become a parent, your whole life becomes about your kids, and you don't know that until you have them. Maybe one day, those who don't have children will understand, but until then, you need to be way more open and understanding about where all these parents are coming from. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. We will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. It's a pleasure for me to recognize two of our Board members, Donna Lane and George King, for the... I'm sorry. Who decided to make this their last year of service to the Board of Education. Donna and George both started on the Board of Education together in 2009, 12 years ago. Combined 24 years of service to this district. George has been a member of the Policy Committee and has served as Vice Chair since 2015. And at that time, when George became Vice Chair, Donna, I believe at the exact same meeting, was nominated Chair of the Board. Donna's been on the Finance Committee and has served on a number of different negotiations teams. She has a wealth of institutional knowledge of all areas of the Board of Ed and Monroe Public Schools that I know is going to be greatly missed. Like I said, George and Donna's combined 24 years is pretty amazing. Folks need to remember that these are volunteer jobs. There is no salary for this. It's a lot of time that they've given up. They'll both adapt for one more meeting, but we wanted to present them with these pewter plates as a small token of appreciation for all their years of service to the Monroe Board of Education and the Monroe Public Schools, students, staff, and families.
Should we take a picture?
Yeah.
Why don't you open them up?
See my smile behind the mouth?
Yeah. I think you're sticking your tongue out.
Smile with your eyes stretched.
Good, guys.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Yep, just stuck with George and I. One more meeting.
You showing up?
Our attendance is pretty much perfect, right? Yeah. I know, almost.
Next up on the agenda, I'd just like to invite Darlene Fensor up to just to give her monthly special education update.
Is she using the floor?
No.
district and three students that were referred were made eligible. To date, we have 508 students in the district with specialized services. In addition, we have received a report from birth to three. We always check in with them after the October 1st numbers are there and we received a report saying that there's a potential for 11 more students to join our preschool program. They will turn three from now until the end of the school year. That does also, we have to consider the number of referrals that we may get from our town preschools. During the school year, we get referrals from the daycares, the preschools in town where we have to evaluate students and may have to also enroll them in our preschool program. So the number may also increase throughout the school year. Oh, sorry about that. Our preschool numbers are already high with each teacher having 18 students. So when I spoke to the Board of Finance on Thursday, we had gotten those numbers and I did suggest that we may have to consider hiring another preschool teacher in January. As we discussed last month, and I also explained to the Board of Finance last Thursday night, we have had a steady increase in the number of special ed students enrolled in Monroe with this summer being a significant increase. Our enrollment continues to increase, but we have not increased the number of staff members we have servicing students. So this evening, I handed out that chart. That's similar to the chart that Joe has presented to you already with the staff in district, the whole staff, and the number of students enrolled. So this is just special education and the number of students enrolled in special education throughout the years and the staff members that we have to service those students. So if you take a look, in 2014-15 school year, there were 367 students in the special education program and 35.2 teachers. Currently, we are at 508 students and 34.7 teachers, and that includes the teacher, the full-time teacher that we're in the process of hiring right now. So if we weren't hiring her, we'd only have 33.7. So since, and also in this figure, you have to figure out that since 2019-20 school year, we've brought six students back into district and every time you do that, it requires more staff. But it does save us in that outside tuition, either public or private tuition. So we have a growing number of students and not an increasing amount of staff. Alan?
Can you tell us about the special education teachers' caseloads?
So right now, they do fluctuate because if we have, we do have some, we've talked about the classes in the elementaries, you know, where we have some more intensive programs. So those numbers are smaller in those programs, but on average, our elementary school special education teachers have a caseload of 12 to 14. The middle school caseloads are 14 to 16 and the high school caseloads are over 20.
Over 20.
Over 20, yeah. So that will be alleviated when we get this new teacher onboard. We do have, in the middle school, there is a difference between the Jadihala Main Campus and STEM. We just had a greater number of STEM students with IEPs this year, so that's why we had put a half of a teacher over at STEM to assist that because that teacher had 26 students on her caseload. So we took the teacher from Monroe Elementary, we took part, left her there part-time, put her at STEM part-time to kind of help out there and alleviate that caseload.
Could you tell the Board a little bit about the responsibilities of the case manager?
Sure. So our case managers work with, they have a caseload of students that they work with. Their responsibilities include, you know, implementing the IEP. So all of the goals and objectives that are on each student's caseload. In the elementary school, they use a resource model and a push-in model, so they pull students out for individualized or specialized instruction in either individualized or in small group. They also push into classrooms to assist in the classroom to help the teacher modify, to help students to be able to complete work in the regular education classroom. At the middle school, it's basically the same model, you know, the resource room and the push-in and pull-out. The high school, I'm sorry, except for the fact that they also teach, they teach some classes too. So the middle school teachers also teach classes and the high school teachers also teach classes. So they may be teaching three classes and then have a resource where they meet with students, but they also have those teaching responsibilities. They make phone calls to parents and, you know, communication for the parents. They have to progress monitor on the IEP, so they're collecting data on students for all their goals and objectives. And if you look at some IEPs, there are students who have, you know, 40 goals and objectives on their IEP, you know, so, and they have to progress monitor all that. And they have to do the testing, the academic testing, when students are up for a triennial review and they have to write reports for that and present those at PPTs. They attend all their students' PPTs and they also do testing for referrals. Did I miss anything?
They work with teachers to modify curriculum.
Yes, yeah. So and a lot of times that's done in those push-in instances. They work with teams. At the elementary, they have grade-level meetings, so if their caseload, if they're working mostly with kindergarten, first grade, they meet with those teachers during the week. At the middle school level, they have team meetings, so they meet with the teams to discuss modifications on tests and, you know, any curriculum that needs to be modified. And at the high school level is the most difficult because kids, the students are in seven different classes, you know, nobody's in the same seven classes, so they have to make contact with all of those teachers, probably on a weekly basis. So it's, you know, it's a lot of time just, you know, making that, the communication between the teachers and the program managers for the benefits of the students.
I think it becomes like problematic because of the amount of hours the kids get. So you may have like 15 kids on your caseload, but, you know, some kids are getting five hours a week, some kids might be getting eight hours a week, 10 hours a week. So you got to modify the curriculum, meet with the students, push into the classroom, sometimes pull out, and it's quite a job.
And that became, that became an issue with speech and, our speech and language pathologists. And I just, I think I mentioned that at our last meeting and I mentioned it to the Board of Finance too, that we are through a, there's another ARP-ESR grant that's just for special education. It's small, but I am increasing some speech and language pathology time because they just can't meet the hours that are on the IEPs with the amount of hours that we have in the district. So we are, we do have a couple of speech and language pathologists who are not full-time and who are willing to increase their hours, so I'm going to do that for the grant for this year, but again, then that, how do we sustain that?
Nick?
Just a quick question on the special education enrollment chart that's in our packet. So obviously in August, there's a big registered because people are being referred in schools starting, right? But as we go throughout the year, obviously November through June is blank because it hasn't happened yet. Is growth typically like linear? Like is it, you know, four in one month, two in one month, and then referred eligibles, you know, three and three? Or is there any particular month in the second half of the year where you get like a spike up?
Yeah, it's always after January, you know, where we will get a spike in referrals after, you know, they've gone through the first and second semesters and then there's concerns. So we will get, you know, we will get a spike in referrals at that time. And, you know, as far as people moving in, that's kind of just, you know.
So just the point that I'm trying to make is, you know, we're officially now at the number that we ended last year with.
Correct, yeah.
And you're saying that typically, there's a spike in January, February timeframe that we'll see in that report.
Right.
And over the last, this is covering eight years, there's never been any type of dip.
Right. And it just seems to be increasing year after year right now. And I, you know, and I think COVID has something to do with it this year with the number of referrals that we got right in the beginning of the school year too. And they're still not, they haven't been able to, you know, schedule all those PPTs yet, but because of, you know, COVID and students have, we've been talking about this, students have been out of school, they're, you know, their, their mental health is, you know, is not where it was before and there are a lot of concerns. So referrals are being made. We are trying to put them through the SRBI process and, you know, put interventions in before we go to PPT, but there are some cases where, you know, we just have to, we do have to go to PPT.
And when we start budgeting for special ed, especially for next year, it wouldn't be outside the realm of reason to assume this is going to continue to increase?
I, yeah, I mean, we can never predict that, but I think that that just, I also had a line graph that I showed the Board of Finance that just shows that increase and, you know, we, like you said, we haven't had the dip. The gap is widening instead of closing, so between the October 1st number and the end-of-the-year number. Thank you.
And you already know, Darlene, that you have 11 adding to this number sometime between now.
Correct.
And June.
Correct.
So really technically, you know at some point it's going to 519.
And that happens every year with the preschool numbers, you know, because as you know, with birth to three, we have to, we have to consider those students and they, some of them are not eligible after they have birth to three services, but most are. So, you know, that always happens again around that January. So.
Does somebody have a question over here?
Jeff? I was just going to ask what you asked. But I mean, is there, do you anticipate any kind of space issues with pre-K?
Yes, because as we're talking about it now with the pre-K, there are three full classrooms. And, you know, if we have to hire another teacher, and we've been trying to be creative, we're thinking out of the box, we're coming up with some strategies that, you know, that we might not need a full classroom to accommodate everyone, but yes, there is no, there isn't a full classroom at Monroe Elementary to put them in right now.
George?
All these, I'm only referring to this one sheet.
Okay.
Okay. So all these numbers reflect October 1st enrollment?
The bottom line is October 1st, yes. And then the second line is the end-of-the-year number, so that's, we start October 1st. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the line graph. I'm sorry. You're right, George. They're all October 1st.
Okay, so we currently have, as of October 1st this year, 504.
Right.
So that was a jump of 58.
Correct.
From the prior October 1st.
Correct.
Looking back over the past, you have seven years of data here. So the highest jump that we've seen in the past is 17, 19, something like that. So nowhere close to what this year was.
Right.
And you're saying it's going to go up again by the end of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless students move up.
So I guess, is this, is this an anomaly this year? Or my concern is that, what's the solution for this? Is the solution just to adapt and to keep hiring more and more educators for this space? Or what is the, what is the solution? Do we expect this trend to now kind of level with the 21, 22 standard? Or do we expect to go back to the six-year prior standard?
All right, well, my only concern is that, you know, our kindergarten numbers and now our preschool numbers are the biggest that they've been in a very long time too, probably ever. So all of those students are going to be moving up. So, I mean, they're going to be with us for a while, so, you know, I would, I would think that unless we have a mass exodus like we had, everybody coming in to Monroe, you know, that we're either going to stay pretty steady with these numbers or we're going to continue to increase. I don't know how many houses are out there for people to move in.
I guess that's what I'm asking is not, not whether that 504 drops dramatically. You know, I'm not inquiring, but it's more along, are we going to see October 1st of next year, another 50? Another, you know, another big jump? And is that going to be the new trend or, I guess, what would be the solution to something like that?
Well, the biggest, the biggest factor in this big jump was the increase of 31 students moving into districts with IEPs. So I can't predict that, you know, for next year, how many students will move in with IEPs. But I do think that, you know, with coming out of COVID, it's going to be, I think it's going to be a few years before we see anything settling back into, you know, pre-COVID.
Both for net new and existing?
Mm-hmm.
Perhaps migrating out of the IEP?
Right, right. I think it's going to be, you know, we did actually, I mean, this week we did dismiss a student from special education, so that, you know, those are, those are the possibilities. But I do, I am concerned about the mental health referrals that we have gotten and, you know, that those students, you know, will require some specialized instruction and that I think is post-COVID and I, you know, I, it's going to take some time, I think, to settle back into those numbers.
The prior spikes or not trend? Okay, okay. Because obviously this is, this type of number is something that we need to plan very differently for than the other.
Correct. And I think that's, I think that's true for both, both regular education students and special education students. The spike in numbers were for both, you know. So, and, you know, you have to make sure that you have enough staff to cover all their classes also, and that's why we ended up having to hire all those teachers last minute.
Agreed.
Yeah.
It's a little bit twofold, Darlene. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, in addition to all the people moving into the town, statewide, the special education numbers are going up, whereas not too long ago, it was like 12 to 13%. Now it's 16% statewide. So in addition to that 16%, we got a mass influx of people moving into the town.
Well, it's good that you know that because that's what my calculation was, is about 16, 17%.
Yeah.
Of our number, based on the total number of students that we have.
Which is consistent with other towns.
Yeah.
Right. Yep. Any other questions about enrollment? Okay. So then I'm going to go into the finances in the Board Pack, pages 36 to 41. We have, it's my student support service lines from this year's budget and newness. Now, the reason that I have it in here this way and not my regular chart is that when I looked at, when I put the regular chart together that I've been presenting all along and we have the total down the bottom, it's a very different total balance than what is in newness. So when I'm reporting on just those lines, the outside agencies, the transportation, the tuition, public and private, it gives a very different balance. So I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, everyone understands what we, what we actually do have. As a matter of fact, it was, my chart actually showed that we had a balance that was approximately $300,000 more than it actually is. So if you look on the last page of the financial statement, you'll see that it's like $552,000 that we have as a balance. The other one was showing like 800 and I didn't want to mislead anybody with numbers, so. But I'm just going to talk about a couple of lines. On page 36, the outside agency line continues to fluctuate and that's due to specific changes in student programming. As you know, we go to PPT every day in all five buildings and anything can change on any given day. So, you know, programs change according to students, student needs in the district. So on page 37, the independent evaluations, all of the, all of this money has been encumbered and the way that we do it in our offices, we have, we have some outside evaluators that we typically use. So when we encumber the money, we encumber some for three or four evaluators that we typically use. And this could increase or decrease throughout the year according to how many, according to the mental health needs of our students. I do have some, some money in the IDEA grant also for evaluations, so we can, we will spend some, expend that first. And this could increase or decrease throughout the year, according to how many, according to the mental health needs of our students. I do have some, some money in the IDEA grant also for evaluations. So we can, we will spend some, expend that first. On page 39, the tuition at REACH increased this year. REACH is a program in the Trumbull Public Schools that we periodically place students in when the program can meet their needs. We hadn't had students in the last couple of years at REACH, but this year we do have a student at REACH. So, you know, and I just wanted to reflect that there was an increase since the last time we placed someone at REACH. So at this point in time, there are savings again in public and private tuition and transportation. This is due to, we did bring students back. And then we do have some students who are not fully utilizing their programs. So the transportation costs, there's a little bit of savings there. However, it depends, you know, there are some students who are thinking about coming back for the second half of the year, you know, after many others are, have been vaccinated. And, and they feel that it would, you know, be safe for them medically. So again, special ed can change at any given moment. So, so, and just so you know that, in a, I did a little calculation this afternoon, in my rough way. If the department expends all of its lines this school year, there is a possibility that we could have a deficit of approximately $200,000.
I'm sorry, how much was that?
$200,000.
Okay.
At this, at this point in time.
If we zeroed out all the lines that some that have, showing a surplus right now.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have questions? All right. Thank you.
My last piece is just a quick announcement on, as we know, tomorrow's Election Day, day off for our students, but our annual professional development day for staff. At the elementary level, teachers will take part in grade level and department collaboration at Jackie Hollow. All staff are gonna be working on a school-wide interdisciplinary unit and planning for their flexible instructional period called PAWS. At the high school, the Anti-Defamation League will be here sharing a presentation with the Massey staff. And they'll also be working on their flex best practices, their flexible timing. And our parent educators, all of our parent educators in the district will be here at Massey, participating in physical management training for most of the day. So, update on that?
Anybody have questions for you? All right. We will move on to presentations, and we have our behavioral techs here.
I'm sorry. Yep, yep, they're gonna do. I want to introduce Mallory Beavis, who, our board certified behavioral analyst. And Mallory's gonna introduce her staff, and they just have a couple of quick slides. This is part of our ongoing, you guys can, you can sit there and just tell Mallory when you want her to move the slide.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mallory Beavis in the District BCPA. I'm the board certified behavior analyst. We have a few behavior techs in our district, and then two of them are gonna do a presentation about their role in the district.
My name is Jeff Marker. I am the behavior tech over at Stephanie Elementary.
And I'm Carol McKellen. I'm the behavior tech over at Monroe Elementary.
So we were asked to come in and kind of explain what we do. It's not the first time I've had to do that. I think a lot of the staff, even in the buildings we're in, have asked what specifically, who we are. They know what we did, but it's like, who, who are we? As behavior technicians, we have a unique experience, background, education in behavior analysts, behavior analysis, ABA, master's degrees, years of experience, that kind of thing. And we were kind of brought on to be that direct support, that direct line between staff, kids, and Mallory. And to be there every day going through that. Some of, and we're gonna go over some of the stuff that we do, ranging from just between us and staff, us and kids, and when things get a little bit more serious. One of the first things we do is staff training. So in the IEP or in the behavior intervention plans, there's a list of interventions, skills to teach, behaviors to decrease, and we work with staff to help them work with their, with the students as well. So we'll work with students directly all day. However, we also want to increase the independence between the students and staff, and eventually just the student. And we do that through structured staff trainings that will give them the skills they can to help carry over some of the behavior plans that we have in place.
All right. The next person we, oh, thank you.
You're welcome. The next person that we support is Mallory, the BCPA. She is wonderful. She's great at what she does, but she can't be in six schools at once. So we're there on the ground every day. And as Jeff said, working with teachers, working with staff, with students. We're gathering data for Mallory in the classroom, training staff. And so when Mallory does get to the building that day, or whatever designated day she's there, boom, we can meet her with our notes, with our observations, with data that's been collected by us and by classroom staff. And just makes her job a lot more efficient, instead of having to kind of get there, have staff ask her a question, and then she kind of has to dig that way. All the questions are asked to us already. So when she gets there, it's all ready to go for her.
I can't underestimate like how important that is. Right before I started working here in Monroe, a couple of years ago, I was in Southbury as a behavioral consultant, moving around from school to school, just like Mallory does on a daily basis. And one day I would hit the elementary, middle, and high school, and you hit all the ranges of abilities and ages. And it was impossible to answer every question they have every week. Because you're only there for a couple hours, and then you, then they send the emails, and you can do your best there. But there's only so much you can, you can answer within that time span. I wish I had somebody who was there with the knowledge and know-how of behavior and behavior analysis to kind of answer those questions immediately, that they didn't have to hold on and wait until we, I came in later. And so it's really great to be able to be that person, to answer those questions right away. I'm sitting there in the back of the room, and they just turn to me and ask me, "In this situation, what would you do?" And we answer it, instead of waiting for Mallory to come by and then late. So when we, when she comes, we can properly utilize her time for more urgent and more complicated questions and intervention. What we also focus on in behavioral analysis is huge, is environmental changes. It's kind of the big thing. How can we manipulate the environment to maximize success? So that sometimes, and we'll go over in the next slide, we're gonna go over some strategies that, with how that looks. But it's looking at the environment and realizing that the behavioral problems that a student might have don't necessarily come only from intrinsic struggles. That's a huge portion, but we have to look around and see what's observable. And sometimes what's observable is not being seen. So we look at the environment, and we, we collect data, and we use that to craft the best interventions we can.
And so who else we support? Obviously, the students. But it's not just students with like a diagnosis. We know ABA is usually linked, or usually tied with autism or special ed. And though we do work very close with students in those student bodies, we work with all students across the board. I put here, ABA is a, or applied behavior analysis, is a universal science. And that just means that the rules of behavior don't just apply to school-aged children. They apply to us. They apply to Mallory. They apply to everyone in this room, in the same way that they'd apply to the children. So though we do work very closely with students with behavior intervention plans or in the special ed department, we do go class to class, and there may be a student one week who's just having a hard time transitioning from lunch to recess, back to math. It's hard for them to settle back in. We'll go in, we'll observe this, we'll tell the teacher some proven strategies that we'll get to in the next, next slide, to help support that student in the best way possible. And so again, we just want to stress that it's not just with special ed. It's not just autism. Behavior analysis is a universal science, and it can apply to anyone.
Just going back to even staff training, a lot, there's a structured way that we have learned to help staff. It's behavior skills training, and the way that it's structured is based on behavioral principles and applied behavioral analysis. And that's not for the kids. So it's just a matter of working through teaching skills to teachers so they can teach those skills, and just remembering that all these things apply to everybody. The last one is probably, I think you would agree, is like the most appreciated piece of our job by other staff, even though all of this is important, and that is crisis intervention. We also are very friendly with our walkie-talkies every day. And if a student's behavior has gotten to the point of being unsafe, then we will be called, and we're trained to learn how to de-escalate or maneuver around the situation to get that person back on track for the rest of the day. That does mean, you know, that we are trained and will be refreshed on PMT training, if necessary. But that is the one that we get the, the thank yous the most. It's just when a kid who's having a really hard time in the classroom, where it's gotten unsafe, and they worry for the safety of the other students. They know that there's somebody who's gonna come in and who can handle that situation safely, efficiently, for both everybody else, for that student. And then we can take that and use that as information to help, how do we avoid that? How do we de-escalate even better next night? That's crisis intervention. So next slide, we kind of talk about basic ABA strategies that we kind of pitch to, to staff on the daily. We kind of use various forms of these that are very important. And this slide doesn't even do them justice, now that I'm looking at them. But they are vastly important for kids, both on the spectrum, various diagnoses, or who are neurotypical, but who require our services, so.
Start off?
I thought you got that one.
Oh, I do, sure. So reinforcement systems. In applied behavioral analysis, in behavioral analysis in general, there's reinforcement and punishment. Reinforcement luckily is the nicest sounding one, but it's also the most effective way of, of changing behavior. Punishment has a role, and punishment is not just like reprimand, reprimand, reprimand. It's anything to decrease a behavior. Reinforcement is anything to increase a behavior. So reinforcement systems include token reinforcements. So you might have some kids walk around with these strips of paper that are laminated with Velcro, and they earn certain tokens to get to something they prefer later. It could be, it could be just verbal praise. It can be forms of attention. It's anything to help increase teach skills, increase certain behaviors, so other behaviors are less likely to occur.
I got the easy one. Behavior, behavior momentum is another one that we like to use a lot. It's mostly for the younger children, but it's just that. It's building the momentum of a behavior, or building up momentum to complete a behavior. So it's also known as high P, low P, which would be high percentage, low percentage, which high percent behaviors to get to a low percent behavior. So for example, it would be if a preschooler wanted to get out to recess, but needed to put shoes on first, suppose exhibiting problem behaviors. We would start with very simple behaviors that we know was in the repertoire, that they can do. Something as simple as do this. All right, now do this. And as they're becoming compliant and following and praising, you're building up that momentum. You're like, all right, now shoes on, let's go. And it builds up to it, which has been proven effective in studies, as well as in the field that we've seen. So yeah, that's behavior, behavior momentum.
We kind of learn to not expect kids on our caseloads to do things on a dime. So we always anticipate to add some time and before and after events. So you kind of help plan accordingly. Functional communication, functional communication training is a huge one for a lot of kids that I have at Stephanie, for sure. And they're all over the district. For functional communication, it's learning how to use your words, basically, in, in a simplified form. What we'll find is a lot of the motives around even some aggressive behavior, some things that can be very unsafe, is a lack of knowing how to communicate those feelings and wants and needs in a socially appropriate way. So that is when we are working close with the speech pathologists and the special ed teachers in the building to kind of formulate, well, where is the deficit? Where, what don't they know how to say? And where, how can we give them the words? And then how can we then reinforce them using those words? That is, goes from everywhere to I want something, to I don't want to do this, or I need more time, or can you give me space? All of those things that would initially be, I've been hit for, instead of used, words used, are incredibly important to decreasing those type of problem behaviors and increasing socially appropriate behaviors.
Next, we have the premat principle, which is just the behavior term for first then, where if you're a parent, or if you've ever worked with children, you know, you've probably heard this, first then statements. And that's just keeping it as simple as possible, first behavior, then reinforcement, or then consequence. So if a child wants to earn time with blocks, let's say, it was like, all right, first spelling, then blocks. Or as simple as first jacket, then recess. Those things, it just keeps it as short and concise as possible. It gets the point across. It's what's expected, and the outcome that'll occur afterwards.
I've had some students use the first then statements as self-talk to help them coast through some really anxious moments. If it's even something that we might seem trivial, like indoor recess because it's raining outside. They have, they use first then to help talk themselves through the idea that they're not going outside today. And that's a lot for them. And it's really cool for them to use that themselves without, not even, sometimes even being taught. It was just like, okay, okay, first, first the cars, then gym. Whatever helps you calm down, man, that, that works. And it's really nice to see. Then we have the prompting hierarchy. These are, this is something that we'll teach staff. This goes with the staff training. This is something I'm currently teaching staff, is learning how to, when teaching skills, teaching academics as well, learning to go from least to most, that you want to be as least intrusive as possible, but you have to understand that sometimes you have to go to the most, a higher level of prompting to get that student to understand what the correct response would be. And we kind of help staff and kids understand how to move from one to the other appropriately.
Again, manipulate the environment. We've discussed this. This, as a strategy, can be physically manipulating the environment, as in desks, as in chairs. An example I like to use is, I was called to a classroom two years ago, and I was totally kept kicking the radiator. He won't stop. I've asked him several times. And my first suggestion was, how about we move him away from the radiator? That way, can't really kick it that way. And if the kicking persists, and he's kicking the door now, or he's kicking his chair, then that's something that we'll look at again. But the first thing we're gonna want to do is just simply manipulate the environment. And this could be extremely helpful for unsafe behaviors. If you have students who climb up on, say, bookshelves or something like that, maybe putting some form of blocking in front of it, or, you know, putting him as far away from the bookshelves as possible, so staff can get over and redirect quicker. Because we want the classrooms to be as safe as possible, obviously. So yeah, physically manipulating the environment itself can be beneficial. And sometimes with a teacher, it's been their classroom for years, they don't necessarily see, oh, if we simply just shift this to this, it can change the behavior itself.
Sometimes that, that can move into allowing them to leave an environment that you would normally want them to stay. You know, you, you make a trade-off sometimes. It says, all right, this, this environment's too much. If you give them five minutes out of it, they might spend the next 20 minutes in it, opposed to spending all of the 30 minutes out of the environment. You kind of make that trade-off, and that's another way of manipulating the environment, changing the environment for that to be successful for the student.
We, you may also have students who, especially in the elementary schools, where there's a lot of artwork up on the walls. There's a lot of flashing colors, this, that, the other, and it's great stimuli for many students. But for some, it can be detrimental to their attention span, detrimental to their, it could be a bit too much sensory input at once. So even just maneuvering the child into a different direction itself, facing away from certain things, can change a behavior tremendously.
So we have two more, and then, well, if you have any questions, we'll answer them. We, we like to advocate the use of positive language. Positive language just means telling the student what, and what you would like to see, instead of not what you, what you don't want to see. Because when you say, don't do this, that leaves a near infinite number of other options. You're just saying one, no to one thing, but there's an infinite number of choices outside of that. And there, there's almost, just one less than infinite number of wrong answers. But if you use positive language, tell them exactly what you want to see, and reinforcing when they achieve that, then everything else doesn't matter, and they will pursue that path over all other paths, and that's what you would love to see.
An example I like to use for positive language, actually, is for our own sake, is if you and I are in a car, and we're on our way to a restaurant, a concert, wherever we're going, we both want to get there. And I got the GPS in the passenger seat. And I'm telling you what not to do. We get to an intersection, I say, don't go left. You're gonna look at me for a second, and you're gonna say, okay, should I go straight, or should I go right? So, and if I kept that up, within two blocks, you pull over, you pull me out of the car, I'm not going to a concert. You'd be very fierce. So for all parties involved, positive language helps tremendously. It just tells them exactly what to do. So an example would be, in the hallway, we don't want them touching the walls, sanitary, there's artwork up. Instead of, don't touch the walls, hands at your side. The expected behavior that you want to see. So that's, yeah.
And then last one, and then we'll close it out. Non-contingent attention is one of the most difficult things to teach staff, which is the idea that some students, one of their, what we'll call the functions of their behavior, is attention-seeking. They require some form of attention. And if by analyzing the data, we see, as an example, that on average, every five minutes, they're doing something they shouldn't be doing to get the attention of staff or peers. I'm sure anybody who's been in a classroom, which is most of everybody in this room, has seen that. So you can do something where if it's. So you can do something where if it's at the five-minute mark, every four minutes, you, you have staff go over and give that student the attention that they want before they get to that moment where they're doing something that we don't want them to be doing. And you'll see those rates of behavior decrease over time because they're getting what they want out of it before you even, before the rest of it. And it's non-contingent. It's not based on if they're doing their work. It's not based on whether they talked out in class or not. It's not based on anything but the time that it was designated to go and give them that attention. And we have seen that decreased behavior numerous times over and it's a really cool strategy. So all these strategies, the reason we went through each one is because on the daily, I think I've, I've addressed at least half of these just today. Training staff and working on these with students one-to-one are just some of the examples of things that we help bring to the table in the classrooms, both in regular ed and special ed, in one form or another. And we do this by showing the staff that and then they go and implement it. We have done it directly with students in their environments. And then there's some students, like I have students over at Stepney where I pulled them from their environment to more isolated space between me and them where we work on these skills in our setting and then we'll later on generalize them out to the classroom so we can really get those, that momentum going. And that's just some of those examples. So we're behavior techs. There's a bunch of us in the district now, which has been really cool. And Mallory's our, our, our captain. And she leads the charge and she's, she makes the final decisions on behavior, decisions that we make for the staff and students. And that's what we do. Thank you.
I just want to pick your, the three of you, your brains for a minute. Why? What's going on now versus three, four years ago? I know everybody's saying COVID, 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 and maybe that's, maybe that's what it is because the children have been home, they haven't been in school to get these, the regiment, right, and the, and the proper behaviors. I think all of this is great, but what, what's going on in the last few years? What are you seeing? Is it COVID? Are parents not doing their job at home? You know, when, when I was at Notre Dame, the nuns had a, had a stick and we behaved.
Right. So.
We call that positive punishment.
Yes.
Reinforcement.
So that's, that's a complicated question only because there's various different reasons why, so we work with kids on autism spectrum. We work with oppositionally defined, disorder kids. We deal with emotionally disturbed kids. We also have a few that are, are products of staying home for over a year. And they're lacking the social skills that gets them in situations that might lead to other behaviors that we don't find desirable, they're socially insignificant. Each one has its own answer. So I'm not going to, we're going each one, you know, but why? It's, I wish there was an answer for the big why. I know for autism, which is the big one, autism is heavily diagnosed, especially in boys. There's controversy in the psychological community about whether it's over diagnosed or not, which is, you know, it's a whole other thing. There's, why are, we have a lot of students who are emotionally disturbed? Well, because life is incredibly hard. And these kids come into this world and they have to deal with the life that they were given them. And they, when they develop those traumas, that sets them back in the skills that they're lacking. And we help try to fill that gap quickly when they, when they're not where their peers are. And then for COVID, you know, just trying to teach those social skills, using all of that, teaching those skills, they, we use different curriculums for that, but finding those where those deficits are. And why is there an increase? It's been very stressful and traumatic for adults and it's been very stressful and traumatic for a lot of kids, especially various different abilities.
So the follow-up to that is, I understand, especially diagnosed children, you mentioned the autism and things like that. And I, I think that's, you know, that, that's steady and I, I understand that. What's the possible trend though, is as we get to, back to normal, hopefully, right? We're back to school, we're in a post-COVID world, over this year, next year, now we're training these children, right? They're getting back, back to normal, adults are getting back to normal, hopefully households are getting back to normal. Do you think we're at the top of the bell curve now and this will kind of calm down? You think things will get better in the next year or two with these strategies and training kids and maybe, you know, parents and everything getting back to normal?
Absolutely. So for those that we'd be talking about, that's really what we're seeing is the trauma and lack of social skill deficits. That would be the, the two major things that would encompass those who are at home for the extent of COVID. Yeah, I would see over time because I think people will revert back to what would seem normal. And that would, and then, you know, you're going to have sets of parents that parent their kids differently and some in ways we don't find the best decisions, but overall, it's going to level out because that's how we teach kids to be social, is to be around other kids, is to be around adults and so they can see what works, what doesn't work and why. And we're talking about neurotypical kids who can watch a social interaction, go, huh, not doing that. Or that, they, they got laughs when they did that, I'm going to do that. That's how they learn and then they go and they try and, and it doesn't work out and they are embarrassed and then they go and try again later. We all know how that feels. That's how we learned to be social. That's how we learned to operate right here amongst everybody. And I think as we, the kids are allowed to be with each other more and about, around adults more, we'll see that level out because that's just, that's natural. That's not just socially influenced, that's a biological need of ours.
Thank you.
You got it. Any other questions? We're all set.
Well, I just wanted to add one thing to what David was saying. You know, the other thing too, David, is that I think over the last 10 to 15 to 20 years, there's been a ton of research in this area too with regards to students. I mean, I didn't know it at the time, but K, in K through eight, I worked with, I went to Catholic school, but it was a behavior tech for anxiety. And I didn't know it at the time, but you know, I don't tell you when I was in school, but it was, you know, the late 90s and early 2000s in K through eight. And, you know, just from a personal perspective, it, it got me through K through eight. I mean, I can't even, I mean, I could tell you story after story about being taken out of class to learn certain strategies to cope in the classroom. And I think as time goes on and we talk about differentiated instruction, we talk about seeing the individual students in the room more so than we've, than we've seen ever before. And I think the fact that you have people who can get to each student individually when you have a teacher who is teaching, you know, we talk about a happy problem, having our class sizes be high because people want to come to Monroe. But, you know, when you have a fifth grade teacher at Font Hollow with 27 and you need time with a student, they might not be, you know, disruptive every single minute of every single day, right? They might not be unsafe, they might need some, and they might not be in special education, right? They might need time outside the classroom to learn some of these strategies. And I think, so to, to answer your question, just from my personal experience, I don't know if, if it will really, you know, when you talk about a bell curve, the, the other side of the bell curves are big dip. I, I don't know if there's ever going to be a big dip because I think some of these things were happening and they just weren't being addressed, individualized in there like we're doing now. And so.
Exactly.
The abnormalities we saw during COVID, I think will level out, but you're absolutely right.
And I think to add to that, I think Monroe's just catching up. Like, how many school systems have you worked for before you came here? Is, is a behavior tech a new thing?
Yeah, and it's, I, I only worked in one public school system, which was in Southbury.
Okay.
And now, no, there was no behavior tech situation. It was just, I worked for a private agency, contracted in, and there was a couple of us.
Okay.
And yeah, that was, that was it. And then if whatever couldn't be emailed, had to wait till we showed up.
Had to wait until you showed up. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you, guys.
Anybody else? Hold on. Jeff.
In your experience, how often would you say you're put or asked to respond to a crisis situation in, in, in schools?
I think it varies. Would you like to answer first?
Yeah, I would say it definitely varies, not just from school to school, but student to student. There are some students who will exhibit dangerous problem behaviors. It could be multiple times a week. It could be, it could, and then what our strategies could drop, but it could still occur every once in a while. But I wouldn't want to give a guesstimation because it varies so much because each individual child is just that, an individual. So their behaviors will differentiate from another, from another school, from another environment. But yeah, it can be multiple times a week in given circumstances.
In my experience, what I, I find very interesting, after what Darlene was talking about, is that we've seen like a spike in the beginning of the year and then in January of enrollment. And from a behavioral perspective, in my experience, all the way back to right when I left out of, out of college, it's the, the beginning of the school year, the, after coming back from winter break, and then right around the end is where we see spikes in behavior and where it's being called more. I, I think it's, we can, you can guess pretty accurately why that is, based on those timeframes throughout the year, you would be right. But throughout the day, it, it was a lot more in September and it's leveled out in October. I, I had a couple today. Yeah.
And I'm just the opposite, beginning of the year, we were flying great. And then as of recently, there's been a few calls, a few calls a week, yeah.
Stu, I just want to jump on with Nick said, that the need's not going to go away. Even once COVID dissipates, the need is still going to be there. I mean, COVID may have made it a little worse, but there's always been behavioral challenges going on in the classrooms. I mean, there's kids who have difficulty processing emotions, processing how other, how they think other people see them and how they see other people. There's just always been a lot going on.
One, one of the things when I've talked to like my friends and family about what I do is that, well, why can't the teachers manage these things? It's because we've asked them to do a lot already. You know, they're, they're asked to teach the academics, they're asked to carry through a lot of different forms of paperwork. And it's, and it's nice to take something like that and be like, that is our job and we will work with you on this behavioral aspect of this student in your classroom to help them be successful in your classroom so everybody can learn. And that's, that's why I, I think we kind of make a difference in the, in the building. At least that's what I tell myself. Any other questions?
So you collaborate with like the OTs, PT, all that, with all their strategies and kind of.
Yep. They're one, one of those.
Team-based.
Yep. One of the, one of the, like I said, for functional communication, it was with the speech pathologist. One of my students, we know based on a, on a, on a report that she has sensory issues. So that made it with the OT. So I went to her and she has a sensitivity to hearing. So we got headphones that she can wear anytime she asks for them, in any situation, she can wear headphones. And so that way she can regulate her body and be more likely to learn.
Awesome.
Yep.
All right. I, anybody else?
I love these questions. We, we did something like this with the paras in the beginning of the school year and we didn't get, didn't get as many questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Sharon, thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Mallory. Thank you.
All right. I think that was a very informative presentation. All right, we will move on to old business. We have two policies up. This is their second review and vote anticipated. The first one is 6159, which is individualized education program slash special education program. And 4212.42, which is drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. Do I have a motion to approve these two policies as presented? Excuse me. Jerry, do I have a second? Nick, any discussion on these two? I think we talked about these last time. Nick.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a very quick point about these policies. I know we're discussing, you know, the transgender policy, but I read these policies over the weekend and I saw in the back, as in every policy, we have a reference list to all the different legal statutes, state statutes, federal statutes and judicial decisions. And I actually read with interest that the judicial decisions that we cite aren't just Connecticut judicial decisions. We actually cite other states' courts, which I think is great actually, that we're looking outside of our own state to reference some of these things that happened. But I actually, in the IEP policy, went and looked up some of these CGS, the Connecticut General Statutes, 10-76A, 10-76FF, 10-76G, and on and on. And most of, if not all of what is in these policies, is contained in state statute. It's contained in federal law. It's contained in judicial decisions. And so I think when we talk about policies, and we're probably momentarily going to adopt this unanimously, you know, this is exactly what these policies are supposed to do, right? I mean, these policies give our local board of education context and definition and they narrow down what we need to know about things that are in, you know, state and federal law. We don't send parents to 50 different statutes and court decisions to make up one IEP policy. It's right here in front of us in our policy book. So I just wanted to say that as we're talking about these policies and policies in the future, that it's important we have that context.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. Next up, we have Steve Swenson, who is going to talk about, give us a NIOSC update now that the team has left, what, a couple of weeks ago now?
Just over a week, yeah. So yeah, the, the visit went extremely well. Thank you for your participation in it on Sunday night to, to kick it off. They were, they were impressed by your ability to, to speak on point on things that, I guess in their experience, they haven't heard board members be so knowledgeable. I'll just put it that way. But they were very complimentary of, of your knowledge, of, of your role and, and what's happening in the school. So, so thank you for that. Basically, they, so they spent Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday at Massey. They met with staff, students, parents, visited classrooms, you know, looked at a, a lot of different documents, our curriculum, et cetera, and basically wanted to affirm what we had kind of self-identified, but also looked to see if there was anything that we may have missed. So it was quality control. They did give us some commendations. They felt like the staff, the community clearly care about students and education. They said that came out loud and true with every group that they met. The good news for accreditation is they felt like we were, they agreed with us, agreed with us that we are aligned to the foundational elements, which are our key to accreditation status. We provide a safe school environment. We have a written document that has our core values, beliefs about learning and our vision of the graduate. We have written curriculum in a consistent format across all courses and all departments. We have a current school growth plan. We have intervention strategies in place to help support students and the school site and plant support curriculum programs and services. So I do anticipate, we probably should have a draft of the report within the next month, probably. They usually send a draft to the report to myself and the steering committee. We can review it. If there's anything that, you know, is glaringly opposed to what we had discussed during their visit, they, they would make amend amendments to it, but I'm not really anticipating. The visit kind of went as expected. They did also commend the, the town really, and, and I'm going to give credit where credit's due to Joe, the, the makeup of the vision of graduate committee of over 50 people of administrators, teachers, students, clergymen, business owners in town, et cetera. The committee that put together the Monroe Public Schools Vision of Graduate, they had never seen a, a, a community take that approach. So they, they're, that, they commended us for, for that. And then they commended us also that there's a, a common expectation, you know, to move more towards student-centered teaching and learning, which is a lot of where their kind of recommendations fell. Some of the recommendations they gave us were to kind of let the vision of a graduate kind of drive our decision-making as it relates to curriculum assessment, instruction and even budgeting. The one thing that they did say that it did, it seemed like there wasn't a common, clear understanding of exactly what student-centered learning looked like across all classrooms. So that's some, that's some work that, that we need to do as, as a school to just kind of come to that common understanding of, of what it is and more importantly, what it looks like. They also, part of the commendation was for the creation of the peer leadership team that kind of came out of the, the diversity club and the school climate club kind of melding last year together. There's several staff members, Mr. Lowell, Mr. Parkhurst, Sherry, and a, and a few others that I'm forgetting right now, but that are working and allowing students to kind of drive the culture and climate change at Massey. drive the culture and climate change at Masick. They're coming up with ideas on how to improve the school, how to increase inclusivity, et cetera, and, and really giving the students that voice in, in, in making Masick their own. So they also, as a recommendation, at the same time, you know, asked us to continue to empower that team to, to continue their work. So again, we probably should have that preliminary report by the end of the month and then it goes back. The, the team that came are not, they don't determine our accreditation or not. They are held responsible for writing the report. That goes to the executive NIASC committee. So once the draft comes to me and the steering committee, we review it. We, if there's any recommendations we have for revisions, we would suggest those to the, the chair of our visiting committee. And then the final draft of the report then gets sent to the NIASC executive committee. Determination probably January. It depends on how many visits they have this fall. Any questions on it, the process?
It sounds good so far.
Yes.
We're in a good place.
Yes. Yeah, they, again, the, the visit went as expected. There was nothing.
No red flags.
No red flags. You know, obviously, you know, they, they got a glimpse of Masick, you know, which we all know is a, it's a, it's a high-quality educational programming. You know, are there things and areas we can improve? Absolutely. But yeah, nothing, nothing.
Good, good.
Should stand in the way.
Glad to hear.
They did not get to see my new sign though.
Looks awesome.
Yeah.
Anyway. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to new business. First up is discussion of board member budget assignments.
Yeah, last year, we, last year we did this and, you know, I thought it was a really good worthwhile exercise. Really gave, you know, everyone on this, on this board good insight into what was going on to make up the, the individual department budgets. So I thought we should keep it. I know this is kind of an awkward time to try to develop the assignments. It'd probably be easier if it was Wednesday night right now, then we knew who was going to be around. But, you know, I just have from last year, I mean, let me know your thoughts, but I just figured we can kind of stick with the assignments we had last year and then kind of work if new people are in and, you know, we could, we could work them in. So just correct me if I'm wrong, but I think elementary, I had Donna and Christine last year. Okay, so Christine.
Somebody else.
We know it's not going to be you. Jackie Hollow, we had George and Jerry, so.
Possibly.
Possibly. Jerry, definitely not George. I think Masick, Shannon, were you Masick last year? I was the only one I had a question on. And you're bad, you're not up, so.
So you got Masick again.
Jeff, I think you did athletics last year with John DeGeneres. Nick, he did professional development and curriculum with Sheila. Alan, special education and Dave, facilities and IT. So, I mean, if everybody's good with that again, I, I just think it'd be good if, if you meet with those people and I'll give them a heads, the heads up. Go ahead.
Right, and whoever the new people are, that may need to fluctuate.
Okay, so I'm going to be me and throw a whammy in this whole thing. We could stick with this plan or should we all rotate every year so that we really get a full spectrum of the entire district and not just be tunnel-visioned around so that I can go to the elementary schools or I can go here or whatever it is? And then after 20 years of being on the board, I'll really know what's going on, which, but that's just to throw out that idea too. It might be more efficient considering our time strength to do the same thing, but at the same time, I would like to learn more about all the other departments. So I would like to switch me up this year, but it's, the rest is up to you guys, I guess.
What did you have last year, David?
Facilities and IT. And it was, it was just very interesting to be at the school and sit down with Paul and sit down with facilities and look at the machines and I, I learned a lot, but I would like to learn about everything else that's going on in the district. So for me, I want to, I want to change something next year.
Joe, are you looking, wondering if I'll switch with David?
Yeah.
I'll switch with David, but I, I don't know if you want Jackie Hollow, Dave.
Well, maybe, maybe we do the email thing again and we can volunteer.
Let's do that. Let me send out an email and then if you want to sign up for the same one, I just, you know, keep it as a Google Doc and keep checking it out.
Yeah, because we do have.
I think that's a great idea though.
We do have new members coming in, so.
Yeah.
That way everybody rotates and then you're, you know, so now you're.
More worldly.
Yes.
Well, I think it's two-way too. Jerry, correct me, but was it Mike's first time around doing it?
Yeah.
So I think Mike got just as, Mike got some stuff from us and we got something from Mike.
Agreed, yeah.
So I think it's, it's too late for the administration as well. You know, from what your, what your skill set is that you're bringing to them.
It's good, it's good preparation.
Rotating is, is great.
Yeah. Nick? Are we supposed to do the initial meeting before your budget presentation or before, right?
Yeah. And I think that to George's point, I think that was very helpful for them as they then came before the full board, they were even that much more prepared to, to address questions.
But even if, this is a technical question, but even if new members aren't sworn in, they can still have meetings, right?
Well, they're sworn in on the 22nd, so they're now members as of the 22nd, even though the first meeting's not till December 6th. They're now, as of, as of they're swearing in, they are members of the Board of Education.
And we are not.
And we are not.
Yeah, okay, I just, you know, Thanksgiving's in there, so I was just trying to give people if they want to do it.
Well, the good thing is that because of the way Thanksgiving falls, you have a fifth Monday. So you really don't have your budget presentation until December 6th. So they're sworn in on the 22nd, so if, let's just throw away Thanksgiving week. They have that whole next week to be able to meet with staff and everything.
Okay.
Do we have the time to meet with the departments prior to the departments finalizing their budget and giving them to you?
No. And the only reason why I say that, Dave, is they've already started.
No, I know that and that's a good thing, but.
Yeah. You might have, I mean, some folks might, some folks might, but I met with the elementary and Jackie Hollow today.
So it's more of us understanding their budgets than it is influencing their budgets?
A little of both though. It's, I mean, it's not fine.
Offering some advice, yeah, okay.
I think it's, you know, it's messaging too. It's like, how are you, what are the highlights? What are you going to sell? You know, what, you know, not sell, but what are you going to, what do we got to talk about? We got to create an understanding and awareness. That's all.
All right, so Joe, you'll send that out?
Yep.
All right. Next item is discussion of the transportation contract.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it out there for, for discussion and get your thoughts on our, our current contract with All-Star. It expires this year. There is a provision in the contract that at the board's discretion, we can extend that contract up to another five years. So we could extend it a year, two years, three years, five years, whatever we wanted. Positives of that pros are, you know, we get a firm number, you know, probably get an earlier firm number for our budget on transportation. You know, obviously cons, there's, you know, there's a little bit of risk in terms of, you know, someone, you know, possibly coming in, you know, lower. One thing I'll say about All-Star is we've had, whereas a lot of other districts have, have really struggled this year, we've been, we've been in pretty good shape compared to some of our neighbors. So, but I open it up to the board. I, I mean, I'm just curious to know. Do you guys have a deal?
How many major competitors are there to All-Star? Like if we were to open it up to bid, what would the?
All-Star, DATCO, First Student, Durham. Those are, I think, the big.
The company that we used before All-Star.
First Student.
Yes.
First Student, yeah. I was going to say that, oh. But we had some issues. We had a lot of issues, especially in the beginning of the school year with getting things. And I remember like when Jim Magistin was here just saying how different it was when we switched to our current company and how smoothly it was run. And we hear it all over the news all the time about the issues with the shortage of bus drivers and we, they've done, they've done well.
They've done a great job, absolutely.
They forgot to stop at my son in the morning, but, but he wasn't normally there before, so, but.
I mean, overall, with all the.
Yeah, with everything going on.
Obstacles that have been going on.
Yeah, we, I think we've been in good hands.
Yeah. It's like the difference between, from being on the board with the previous company to this company, it's like the difference between night and day.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not broke, why are we going to try to fix it?
I know.
And like the rates are.
We're not going to, yeah.
I think our rates are lower than what surrounding towns currently pay.
And you remember those first couple of years? I remember a packed house at Monroe Elementary School. I know Alan was on the board too, with people upset like that.
Oh, yeah.
That first week of school, still dealing with issues. So it was, it was one of the first things that I think we, we looked at was that transportation contract. I think it's worked out really well.
Yes.
So I was, I, I don't want to fix something that isn't broken. I, I, you know, I'm in favor of our current.
I don't mean the wrong part. I just am naturally opposed to not agreeing to something without, if it's going out to bid, it doesn't mean we have to jettison.
Jeff, that's in my mind too. Totally is, but the, there's the bus company, and, and I totally, you know, I get it. I'm just saying, compared to what we have and we're, but All-Star's out there.
We could end up in the very same place that we now are.
We might not be doing ourselves a favor.
We could very well end up in the same place, but if we don't go out to bid, we will never know. And, and even if it's an equal offer, we could still end up, or even lower, we could still end up back with All-Star.
Well, no. Once you go out to bid, you're out to bid.
Right.
So if they're 10% higher, then you're paying 10% higher.
All right, so then clarify, if you opt to extend them for five years.
You've chosen not to extend them, so you've gone out to a full RFP.
To brand new, yeah.
Brand new RFP. So now that contract is done and dead. You cannot go back, say, you know what? I'd like to, I'd like to extend it now because, you know, I, your rate is better than what I just got out on the market, including the rate you just bid on. Once you go out to bid, that's it. Those are the only bids you have now to consider. So they, and I'm not saying what they are and who's it, but you could have a 15% increase because of their, everybody needs to pay, and I'm just, just throwing this out hypothetically, I have no idea. You've had COVID, you have a bus driver shortage, you have to pay more, fuel is more, so now all of a sudden your contract is 15% higher than what your current contract is.
So the option for us is to extend the current contract?
Yes.
And that's our option, that's not their option?
It's our option.
Our option, yeah. One, one to five years.
Right. We could do a year.
Yeah.
And revisit it and see what the busing situation is, right?
Correct.
We may not get a lot of offers because a lot of bus companies may, are so thin right now, they may not want to, and then they could raise their rates and if we're only stuck with two companies.
Right.
Joe, have you met with them yet?
I just had very preliminary conversations with them.
Yeah, but once you go out to RFP, that's it. You're out to RFP, that contract.
The current contract is done.
Your current contract is done.
Your initial offer is done, like that.
Are those numbers in the contract? Like do we know now what those numbers would be for year, if we extended for year one, year two?
No, those would have to be negotiated.
Yeah.
So we can negotiate the current contract and then if we were not happy with it, we could go out to bid?
It doesn't make sense.
What does the contract say?
So the extension option in the contract says, "The board in its sole discretion may exercise an option to approach the contractor to extend this agreement for an additional period of time not to exceed five years. The board shall exercise this option on or before March 31st, 2022. Upon exercising of this option, all terms and conditions of this contract shall be negotiable by the parties."
So we can negotiate with them first and if.
I mean, we, if.
Or keep it the same.
I think we'd have to negotiate in good faith, right?
Right. Right, that's what I'm saying. If we can't come to an agreement, then we would go out to RFP.
Right.
Right. But if they're willing to keep, say, the contract the same or whatever it may be, and we agree, then we leave it as it is. And we pick the terms, if we want to do one year, two years.
Well, that's negotiable.
That's a negotiable.
Probably because that's negotiable on both sides then.
I'm assuming, yeah.
Our main issue with the bus company is not the bus company itself, it's, it's the other stuff, specifically with special ed. And, and meaning a couple of years ago or a year ago, we were talking about how we're having to outsource a lot of this.
You would still do that.
Yeah.
You're not going to change your outsourcing of your special ed.
Not if another company comes in and offers it.
No, because, because that company is always going to be higher than these outsourced companies to run buses. You're paying per run. It's not saying, okay, these are, you're paying per run of a bus.
It's a pain in the butt.
The other companies tend to be lower. Darcie, could you talk to that?
So for, and Donna is right, that you pay the bus company by a run or, or by a day, you pay the day rate. So, and they also chart, there is a fee, and I, I believe probably all bus companies are, are like this, there is a fee for if they cross town lines. So when you, you know, when you have students who are going, attending schools in different towns, you know, you're, you're crossing town lines. So what we found over the years, and this, you know, when Kay was here, that when we were, when we were using All-Star, it was, it was incredibly high to, to transport our students. So we started to get other companies that would transport our students and they, they are at a lower rate and, you know, because they're not using full buses. Sometimes they're just using cars to, to, to transport them. So, yeah, I think that even if we went with a different bus company, we would still have to, you know, use our, our, the transportation companies.
But what we're talking about though is All-Star for our general tiered busing, right? Not necessarily a, a whole one package.
Correct.
I'm, I'm always, as you know, I'm always one for going out for bid, but I, I think, I think we have nothing to lose to sit down with them and to get some thoughts from them. And the other thing I just want to, want to let everybody know now, I have two bus companies that are clients of my security companies. It is not All-Star, obviously, so if we did go out to an RFP, I'd have to abstain from, from that and fill you in some more, but I just want to let you know about that. I do have a couple of companies. But I, at this point, why don't we sit down with them and see what they, what they have to say? We can always then go out to RFP. I think they have been good to us in general.
I do, and I think we should at least sit at the table and discuss extension of their contract.
I just have, just one question. I mean, can, we can engage in negotiating with them and, but what doesn't make sense to me is we can engage in negotiating with them and then still be able to fall back and say, oh, we're going to stay new for five years if we want to. It, it doesn't make sense on the bus company's behalf. You see what I'm saying? If we're going to engage in negotiating with them, they could say, we're, we, you know, we want 10% more, whatever, and we could say, no, we're not in that same, you know, we're not in the same position. But then we can fall, our fallback can be, well, you know what, we're just going to extend you under the previous term.
Well, no, you, no, 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 you're not extending under the previous terms. You're negotiating what the terms are for the extension. So let's say you're sitting there and they said, well, listen, based on all this stuff, it's going to be a 10% increase. And you go, no, you go, okay, well, you know, that doesn't really sound good. We're just going out to full RFP. You could go out to full RFP. You just, just are gambling where they would have offered you 10, now all of a sudden everybody else is offering you 15.
An RFP, it might be 15 or 18 or 15. When they come back with their, their response.
Right. Then they can.
Because you're negotiating in good faith, you know, for a next, the next term of the contract.
Right.
So you're in a position with them where you have that established rapport and that's, that's, that's your negotiating power.
And usually, Jeff, people, companies put those clauses in there because if I own a bus company, I don't want you going out to RFP. I don't want you to know where the better deals are. I just want to keep you happy and I want you to extend with me and retain your business.
They want to retain the business and the best way for them to do that is not drive within an RFP.
Is to negotiate in good faith.
Exactly.
Right.
But then you don't know if you're getting the best deal. You are, you're leveraging your rapport with them and the good relationship that you have with them, and you're putting a price tag on that.
Yeah, it's a crapshoot, Nick. I mean, that's why the casinos are so loaded, yes.
You could go out and go, oh, my gosh, look at this company. You know, they only gave us a 3% increase and everybody else was giving us a 10. And then all of a sudden, you go, okay, well, we're going to go with them because they're cheaper. And now all of a sudden, you have complaints up the yin yang because.
Or no bus drivers or no bus, you know, who knows? Like, what you got.
Right.
We know that the bus runs are running very smoothly. We don't have a bus shortage, bus driver shortage.
Another knock.
You know what I mean? You got to do a lot of knocking on wood, but.